Ten seconds.
Seconds here. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. Before we get down to the agenda this evening, we have a special presentation. A new police officer. Please come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of council. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce Ms. Bethany Morissette, who was sworn in as our newest Beaver Creek Police Officer on September 26th after a very taxing and extensive hiring process. Bethany comes to us from the Trotwood Police Department, where she served there for seven years, most recently as a detective. Before that, she worked at a few other law enforcement agencies, completed her Ohio Peace Officer Training Courses in 2013, and has joined our organization. During her interview, she told us that she was very excited to be part of our community. Her outlook is incredibly positive. I think she's going to make a fine addition to our department, and we're happy to have her as part of our team.
All right. Bethany, would you like to comment at all?
Sure. I just wanted to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to be part of the team, and I'm really looking forward to what we have to offer here.
Thanks for joining our team.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. All right. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Adams for the pledge.
Turn me with the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, over three years ago, we got hit with a tornado that really messed us up here. I mean, it took a long time to recover, and the devastated area was not nearly as large as Florida in their last hurricane. Pretty much, the whole state's been affected. I know there's places down there that will never be the same again. And I know I'd like to take just a moment, if you would, and join me in a moment of silence for the people that are recovering and have to rebuild, and over 120-plus lives that were lost down there. So if you'd join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Don. We have an agenda before us this evening. Any comments or changes?
Move we approve the agenda, Your Honor.
Second. I have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, minutes. We have the minutes from the September 19th work session. Any comments?
Move we approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 19th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention.
Aye.
Thank you. Next are the minutes from the September 26th regular session meeting. Anyone?
Move we approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 19th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions.
Aye.
Thank you. Next are the minutes from the September 26th regular session meeting. Anyone?
Move we approve the minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from September 26th as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? We're good. Thank you. All right, pre-scheduled, we have... Yes, Mr. Landham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we did this at a work session, but we felt that this is good public information to have. Before us, we have Jeff Mormon, our city engineer, and Will is our GIS specialist. And Will joined us just... What was that, March?
May.
May. Okay. It seems like a lot longer, right? He's been doing so much with our GIS information. And tonight, what we're going to show is what we started about four years ago, three years ago, four years ago, in a system that was formerly known as Dude Solutions. Now, it's been bought, the company, by Brightly, I think is the new name of the company. But this, the city utilizes this for our work order system, our GIS system. Planning uses it for our, you know, permits and along with engineering, but our house... What's it? Code Enforcement. Yeah, I couldn't think of the code enforcement. And as well as Public Services uses it for work order systems, to fix it from a pothole to other items as well. So it's a big system, but tonight specifically, we're showing you GIS. And reason for this, the GIS is an important part of our system that we're building all these assets, and that's what they're going to show you tonight, is the assets. You have to know what you have. Many years ago, just a few years ago, sorry, four years ago or so, a lot of these assets, if they weren't even, they may not have even been listed. But if they were listed somewhere, the chances are, they were on in an Excel spreadsheet as an asset. So we've come a long way in a very short period of time, and we keep pushing this. That's why we hired Will to help us with this project and continue. It's something that, just when you... You're never done. It's always updating, and as you go on, and assets age out, and you have to redo assets as you, you know, repave something, recurb something, and you have to put new dates in, you have to do all that kind of stuff. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mormon, who is going to just give us a background information, and Will, I think, is going to be our driver. So take it away, Mr. Mormon.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. As I think everybody's aware, over the past several years, several months, staff has been working on bringing up our GIS system. And I'd like to thank Will. Mr. Bagley's been a great asset to us, and he's really helped to really advance our progress on this project quite a bit here. Some of the main goals when we build our GIS database, a couple of main things. We feel it'll help us improve future planning for projects. Obviously, it'll improve tracking of the age and condition of the assets the city has out in the field, with the overreaching goal of becoming more reactive in our maintenance system to being, or I'm sorry, being more proactive with our maintenance, instead of being reactive, to fix it before it breaks and becomes a hazard to the traveling public. In meeting these goals, again, Will has done a lot of our work in inputting data, but I should also mention, we did get some assistance from a consulting firm to help build our storm sewer database, and that's all reflected in what you're going to see here in just one minute. And again, we're getting more of a complete picture of the assets we have in the field. We're now, I think, is an opportune time to show you where we're at with this, and to kind of show off some of the features that we have. To start off with, we'll start off with the stormwater unfunded projects. And as you may recall, in our five-year capital plan, at the end of the five-year plan, there's a section with various stormwater projects throughout the entire city that we haven't been able to fund over the years. What we've done is, we've taken all that information, and we've inputted into the GIS, where if Will could click on St. Willowcrest, if you would, Will. You can see, we can track information on the project, project budgets, et cetera. And we're currently updating all these projects to get all these budgets, budget numbers a bit current, because we haven't done that for a while, where at the end of this process, we should know, put a dollar amount to our backlog of unfunded stormwater projects. Will, if you could click over to our street capital plan. And you also notice in our capital plan book, there's multiple products listed. Yeah, we have multiple phases on these projects. Well, we'll go through the design phase, right-of-way phase, construction phase, and all that information is encapsulated in the GIS here, where Will can click. If you would, Will, click on that North Fairfield Road project. And again, we can go through for each. That's the design phase in '22, but we have also the construction phase. All that information is all included in a single spot, where you can just click and view that information and find out all you need to about this project. We even have the grant funding included in that. Okay. If you could maybe click over to the street conditions map, Will. Okay. As you know, with our annual resurfacing program, our goal is to target the worst streets first. So, you know, the condition of the street is what alerts us to go out there and actually physically drive the street and evaluate it, and to make our program fit what we can afford. You can see in this mapping, there's different colored lines throughout the whole city. We have a pavement condition rating for every stretch of pavement in the city, and the colors you see indicate different levels of condition on the various pavements. So just to show you that we have every street in the city included in this, and again, this is a powerful tool for us when we get to work on our annual resurfacing program. If you could click on one of those streets, too, Will, just to show the information we got there. Right. You can see, we have the width of the street, the length of the street. Last year, it was paved, all those important numbers, where if we have to estimate how much it's going to cost to pave that street, for example, knowing the surface area is the big variable in calculating that cost. Okay. If you would pull up our storm sewer mapping, Will.
Can I ask a question before you move to that?
Absolutely.
When you're looking at the condition of the streets, what are the things that you're taking into consideration?
You know, age is always a big one. We try to get, on average, we get about 20 years of life on a plat street, but there's a lot of variables in that. You could have like a bad subgrade, it could be a water issue, they make it deteriorate quicker. A lot of times, like a tree canopy will make it deteriorate faster. So what we do is, we will take like the bottom, say, what, 30 miles of street, Nick? 25 miles of street, and we'll physically drive those 25 miles of street, and we'll identify which ones we think are in the worst condition, and those are the ones that we'll put forward to get resurfacing treatment that year.
Thank you.
Sure.
And Mr. Mormon, do we do a PCI... The PCI rating, every so often, every few years?
Yeah, what we'll do, again, we have those 25 lane miles of streets. Obviously, we can't do the whole city every year, but we'll take those 25 lane miles, and we'll rate those. We'll do a pavement condition rating for all those streets. So eventually, over the course of, yeah, probably several years, we'll get all the streets done, but we can usually get about 25 per year rated.
We do that in-house?
We do, yes.
More than...
Yes, please. Okay. If you could just zoom out for one second, Will. Just to show, I'm trying to show just the scope of what we got here. Yeah, yeah. 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 Just to give you an idea, this is our storm sewer mapping for the whole city, and you can see, it's just a huge amount of facilities the city takes care of out there. All the manholes, catch basins, pipes, is all represented on this drawing, and so it's a lot of stuff. And if you could zoom in, Will, on one little area, we can get a closer look here. And it kind of similar to the street conditions on our storm sewer, we have all the pipes rated by age. And the reason why that's beneficial is, and we also have materials in there, too. Again, as part of that overall goal to be more proactive in identifying an issue before it, if we cause damage to the public or disruption to somebody driving to work, let's say, we can identify an older piece of pipe or corrugated metal, and we can watch that a little bit closer to hopefully tackle that before it becomes a real problem. And again, the different colors signify different years when the pipe was installed. You could jump to street lighting, Will. Okay, if you could zoom out again there. Yeah, again, the street lighting, you can see, again, just a bird's eye view. There's a lot of lights in the city. Kind of the reason why this is important is, some of these lights are paid for via special assessment. Some are city-paid, and some are paid through the contract with Miami Valley Lighting, where we're trying to separate these lights, put them in the appropriate category, so when the city is invoiced from Miami Valley Lighting or DP now, we can equate the invoice back to the lights in the field and bill it to the proper accounts. And lastly, Will, if you pull up the sidewalks and curb. And what you're seeing here is all the curbs and sidewalks within the city, I think. Will, I think, what is it, the sidewalks or the teal?
Sidewalks are the green and teal, but curbs are red.
Right. So if we were ever to develop, say, like a sidewalk program, this would be the basis for us to start evaluating sidewalks and to start planning for a project, if that ever comes down the road. We also use this when we do our curb and resurfacing program, where we know what streets have a curb, what type of curb, and we can track when it's spot replaced, so we don't double up on something accidentally.
Mr. Mormon, the same principle here. If I were to click on a sidewalk, would it tell me when it was installed?
Absolutely. I'm not sure how much we have in this. We're still kind of building this database. How much is in that, Will?
Not much on this sidewalk. And we, once I have the condition in, but as we get it, or as it previously connected also, we do.
And you can overlay roads and curbs together, just so you can see the combination?
Yes, sir.
I think it's such a great feature.
Right.
Jeff?
Yes, yes, sir.
Will you have one of these for, well, the thing that's on our program tonight, the mowing? What areas we will be...
Absolutely, yeah.
What areas people are responsible for?
We can certainly pull it up for you here, and I think...
Oh, okay.
You still have that, Will, from last time?
I didn't know whether that was shown already. Was it? I don't think so. That'd be kind of a neat thing.
Well, Will's looking for that. I just want to say, you know, we've made a ton of progress on this. We're excited about this product, and there's a lot of potential yet for us to still shoot for on this, but we're making pretty good headway on it. And just lastly, our goal, too, is, once we get some of these data sets a little bit more polished, we plan to put some of these out on our website, where the public could example, could pull up an interactive map and actually see, you know, how their street compares to the guy down the street who got paved this year, or if their curb's bad, and stuff like that. So that's coming soon.
That's huge, just in itself.
Absolutely.
We finished cap on the areas again, which we can publish out, if you need to, so if they can't see.
What you're showing there, Will, is everything the city takes care of?
Right here is the finished cap mowing area that we take care of. Right now, it's all one color. I can't, you're unable to differentiate, but right now, it's just one general covered area. And all of them, it is maintained by the contractor, if it's done by us. This is like this area, making it as simple as it is right now.
Wow.
Great, thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. You were looking...
Pretty neat. Lot of work.
Data, data, data.
Lots of it.
All right. Any questions? Comments? All right. We'll move on to ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 22-24.
Ordinance 22-24, an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council repealing Section 97.10, weeds and grass of the City of Beaver Creek codified ordinances, and enacting a new Section 97.10, weeds and grass.
Thank you. Any comments from council?
Your Honor, I'd move ordinance 22-24. Approve the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 22-24. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is Resolution 22-53.
Resolution 22-53, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an LPA federal project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the project known as the I-675 at Grange Hall Road Interchange Project, PID number 117486.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. This is a project that's been around for many, many years. We've tried for a long, long time to get funding for this. This is, again, the, to improve the interchange at I-675 and Grange Hall Road. Right now, it's only a half interchange, and we feel that building a full access interchange would greatly improve traffic around the base and help support the mission at Wright-Patterson, access to Wright State University, sewing hospital, et cetera. As I said, we've tried multiple times to get funding, and fortunately, through the help with Congressman Turner, we were able to get, we were able to secure $400,000 in federal funding to help pay for the initial studies needed to get the ball rolling on this. We're estimating the total cost of the study to be $500,000, so it'll be 100,000 local share, it looks like right now, with the $400,000 in federal money. Since receiving word that we received the grant, we've got the project program with ODOT, and we've gone through the initial steps to get the ball rolling. And the next step in this process is to execute a formal agreement with ODOT that delineates the administration and the funding for the project. And by passing this resolution, we'll give the city manager the authority to sign that agreement with ODOT. And for what it's worth, we're now working on the scope of services, and we hope to get everything advertised and look at proposals yet this year, and to get going with the study January, February '23. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. It's just one, the first baby step to a new interchange, or the completed interchange, I should say.
Yes.
Somewhere down the road, so thank you very much. Charles?
Yes, Your Honor. I had a question, Jeff. In the material that we received, staff recommended, says, "The local LET process allows more local control than would be permitted if the project followed the traditional ODOT plan development." Boy, when you read through all those rules and regulations, I was trying to figure out, what does local control mean?
Sure, sure. It was really, there's two tracks you can choose to take with a project of this nature. You know, the city could elect to say, you know, "ODOT, you guys take it. It's your interchange.
Yeah.
You guys roll with it." Or we could manage it locally. The benefit of doing it locally, if ODOT were to run the project, they would take all their labor costs off the top of the grant money.
Oh, I see.
So, you know, so if we went with ODOT, you know, a big chunk of that $400,000 would go to pay for their staff time, where...
I see.
If the city manages it, we can put 100% of that money into the study.
But we still have to adhere to all those regulations that are...
There's still, yeah, we still follow the federal regulations, but they delegate the selection of the consultant, supervising the consultant, authorizing payments, things of that nature. They delegate that to the city.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
If I may, just add two cents in there. Remember, we got this grant funding through help, and it was a little confusing on who was going to get this funding. Congressman Turner wanted this funding coming directly to the city and not to the state, and somehow or another, it went to the state, and a little upset about that, I think his office was, but we ensured that we know how to work with ODOT, and that was the first thing we learned out of the gate, that ODOT wanted to charge us a fee for the money that we got for them, basically. So we said, "No, we'll manage it." So that's what we're doing with that. Now, that list of rules that you see, it is to protect us, too, because ultimately, this is going to be ODOT, right? They're going to get the funding. We may help apply for funding in the future, you know, because this will be millions and millions of dollars for such a program, but that, for such an interchange, but that is definitely going to be ODOT's responsibility. But to do the study, ODOT, we want to do it ODOT's way, as far as what data they need, what to look at, because we want all that, so that there's no, you know, we do, we spend $500,000 for this study, and ODOT gets the study and says, "This doesn't have this, this, or this that we make our decisions on for such interchanges." We would have a very expensive paperweight at that point in time. So we did, we do want to follow all these rules and regulations of, as far as outlining what we need to do, what the responsibility and the area of the study that, you know, mandates what we are to collect. So it's a good thing. I'm glad we are able to manage it, though, to save those cost dollars. I think all along, we were planning on doing that, when we thought the money was coming directly to us anyway. But it should be a great project. It is a, we want to hurry up and get it done. It's going to take some time to do this, but we're hoping some of those big infrastructure dollars that's, you know, laying around at the feds maybe won't get all spent, but we, in order to get that interchange funded, we have to start at this process. You can't just ask for capital money without having this study. So we'll get the study done as soon as we can, and then hopefully, there's some infrastructure dollars still hanging around that we can get this project actually funded then. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Jeff. All right, we, you have a resolution in front of you.
Move to approve Resolution 22-53.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 22-53. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is liquor license.
Just filling in for the chief. He regrets that he cannot be here tonight, but all we have is a request for a new liquor permit. The Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control sent notification of a request regarding a new D-5J liquor permit for T.N. Golf Incorporated, doing business as Alpar Golf &amp; Social, located at 14 Green Boulevard, Beaver Creek, Ohio, 45440. The record checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, were conducted on the applicant and shareholders for this application request. Staff is recommending that this application request move forward without comment.
Thank you.
Motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we're moving on. Decision item, there isn't, there aren't any on the agenda. It was just a line item. Council time. How about, Councilmember Kern, would you like to start with council time?
All right, Your Honor. Well, I'll kick it off with the Dayton Builders Group, Mr. Sam Davis, that we had the honor to be there for the ribbon cutting of his business here off of Dayton's Union. It's very, very nice, and he's got it all together, and really looking for a fantastic opportunity for his business to move ahead. Also, participated in the coffee with the COP program, and we had a lot of people go through. Councilmember Adams was there with the camera, and probably has a lot of the data on how many people went through it, but it was a good day. And also attended the Candidates and Issues, and I want to compliment both Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Schwartz for the nice presentation that they made on the levies that day. I thought it was well-presented. And thank the Beaver Creek Women's Group for putting that on. Attended the first Thursday event that is, that the mayor puts on over at the hotel on Dayton's Union. They did a nice job, and it was really a very nice evening. Don't forget, Try a Truck this Saturday, 10 to 1. And anybody's got children, hopefully this year, where last year, we were somewhat limited. This year, the kids will get to climb up and turn those wheels and have a good time. And lastly, again, another cadu for the Beaver Creek Football Team. I know that they didn't make it this week against Miami'sburg, but hey, they're getting better. They're moving up, and it takes a couple of years to get things together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I had the opportunity with Councilmember Adams and Mayor to host some of the Wright-Patterson Air Force Base International students here at city council. It was a great event. The international students came to learn about local government after visiting the State House, and so they had lots of great questions. Always great to partner with Wright-Patt. I wanted to comment on how wonderful the homecoming parade was this year. It was so well-attended, and there was so much candy. In fact, someone suggested that we should start gathering it to save for Halloween, so that we could hand it out. It was, it was just incredible. The community support was great. It was one of those really heartwarming experiences, makes you proud to be in Beaver Creek. I also attended the police open house last weekend. It was a great event. I wish there would have been a better turnout, but definitely, if you have any questions or concerns as it relates to the police department, check out Your In Touch. There's a great write-up in there, as well as the information that's on the city page. In addition, you're always welcome to reach out to any of us here on council. We'd be happy to talk to you about the upcoming police levy. Last Monday, I attended the Family Violence Prevention Center's Domestic Violence Awareness Candlelight Vigil. It was an incredible ceremony. For those who don't know, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month and so I encourage you to just read up on domestic violence. It's much more prevalent than you would think it, it would be. It affects everyone, so it's not just a misnomer that it happens in lower income communities. It affects communities such as Beaver Creek and so just encourage you to think of and raise awareness for those victims. As Councilmember Curran stated, I had the pleasure of providing some information on the Streets Levy at the Beaver Creek Women's League event. I want to thank them for that event. It is always such a pleasure to sit and listen to the issues and to be able to have that forum where residents are able to ask questions of the candidates about the issues or the potential, or the candidates that are running for election. And so, a big thanks to them for that event. And with that, I think that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, thank you. How about Councilmember Bales?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I'll probably repeat about half because I think a lot of us council members were following each other around from event to event, but I will start with one thing that I attended that I don't believe any of the others did. It's the Miami Valley Regional Planning Board of Directors meeting last week. It was a good meeting. They did adopt new annual rates for all of the members. The new rates are based on the 2020 census and so we saw about a 3% increase in our population, up to 46,549 people according to MVRPC. So, our rate increased $3,258 and 43 cents for 2023. So, as we go into our budget cycle, of course, I'm sure the city manager is obviously aware of that, but we still get a tremendous bang for our buck with membership in Miami Valley Regional Planning, with all of the fantastic roadway funding projects that they help us with. They also made an announcement about the Priority Development and Advocacy Committee projects that are being sought right now for state and federal capital grant opportunities. So, I'm sure that our staff is on top of that process as well. Speaking of our staff, I had the honor of playing in a golf outing this Saturday with the mayor and county commissioner in honor of Jeff McGrath, our former planning director. And it was a great event, a large turnout and what started off as a brisk morning turned into a beautiful day. So, we enjoyed that and it's always nice to remember Jeff and see his family and, and really celebrate his life. I thought I'd give a little quick Owens Place update. They have recently completed what's called a WeGo Swing. It's a big handicap swing for wheelchairs. They've also added to the bottom of the hillside slide with additional turf that was made possible by a large donation from the Lofino family as well as a nonprofit grant that they received from Green County. And so, all in all, is about $125,000 project and it is now open for business. And I was just out there this afternoon and there, there were probably 50 kids enjoying it.
All right.
It was really cool. I had the honor, along with several council members, to meet Cub Scout PAC 85 from St. Luke's Church. They came in here to learn about local government and they stormed the dais and, and took over the gavel, but they really had an opportunity to learn about the way our, our local legislation is made and could understand it and even debated a couple of issues that we may have debated once or twice before. So, it was very interesting. Like Councilwoman Schwartz said, this is Domestic Violence Awareness, Awareness Month and I have the pleasure of serving on the Board of Directors for Family Violence Prevention Center and so I would too encourage everyone to understand that domestic violence affects many people in many different ways and keep that in the back of your mind and if you need help, there's help available. I want to congratulate Bethany Morissette from the Police Department for her appointment today. I had the pleasure of working with one of her former colleagues who was a former police officer in Trotwood as well and so I got a chance to talk to her about Bethany before the meeting and she had nothing but very glowing remarks. So, congratulations to the Police Department, you got a good one there and I look forward to, to meeting her. I think I'll call it a day. Thank you.
I thank you. Councilmember Doerr.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to first have a shout out to Officer Millet because there was a seven-year-old boy that went missing in our neighborhood for about two hours and it was, a number of us got out and kind of went around, but it just a very professional job by the officer. You know, story went well, young man was found and all worked out, but it was just excellent professionalism on the part of Beaver Creek Police Department. Relatedly, I want to thank the, the chief and many others for the, the open house. He was very generous with his time, connected and took time to really answer questions. Take a look at the police levy. There's a lot that's there based on accreditation from the outside and for us, it's a way of keeping ahead of the curve, especially on techniques and procedures. And so, I'd again echo Councilmember Schwartz's comments to really reach out, to ask questions about the forthcoming levy as well. And alongside Mayor Stone and Councilman Curran, had the opportunity to attend the Dayton Builders Group ribbon cutting. Really wonderful to, anytime to see a Beaver Creek business expand and it was neat to hear his story, over five years in business, slowly incrementally, hiring more people, taking on a bigger office and really wonderful family and a really wonderful ribbon cutting event. So, a big thank you to the Beaver Creek Chamber of Commerce for that and for Mayor Stone as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Well, I guess I can just say ditto to a lot of things here. It's, it's really great being involved with a council that does a lot of things and so we all do a lot of the same events, but I would like to say welcome to Officer Morissette and I look forward to her having a long and safe career here. I think she'll do an excellent job. I was pleased to be a part of the international military and civilian officers that came in and talked, had a couple of conversations with two or three of them that the way they do business in their country is totally different than the way we do business in ours and just talking that through was, was kind of interesting. So, the homecoming parade, I was able to go to that and I think this was probably the biggest homecoming parade we've had in a long time. It was certainly the most well-attended and the candy, you're right, it was just amazing. I was ducking, I was looking for some armor plate to put over me so I didn't get hit, but I also attended the candlelight vigil with the Family Violence Prevention Center along with Councilwoman Schwartz and Councilman Bales. It was a very moving evening. I saw a couple of people there that continued after the activity was over. I wanted to talk with them, but I thought better, better of that, so. I'd like to thank the Beaver Creek Women's League for putting on the Issues and Candidates. They did a, it was a well-run program. They do make you stick to three minutes, so, which is good, but that means everybody sticks to the three minutes because I had somebody get up in my face because I went three minutes and three seconds, but. One of the things that I attended this past Saturday was a meet and greet with first responders and special needs kids. We set this up a few months ago and the Police Department, the Fire Department and the Sheriff's Department were there and it was an opportunity for the kids to get to talk with first responders, police officers. They got to see a firefighter put his turnout gear on and take it off so that he wouldn't, they wouldn't be afraid of him and they would understand more about that that's a real person in there. We're working on some things to follow up with that along with Captain Molnar and hopefully we can get some things going there too. Tri-A Truck this coming week, weekend on Saturday. It's at the municipal garage and we're also doing the, Fire Department's having their open house at the same time. So, it's an opportunity to go up on Orchard Lane and get your fill of big vehicles. Kids get into cars and trucks and it's all kinds of things. It just, be aware that the first hour is sensory, so it's, there's no noise, but from 11 to 1, it gets kind of loud sometimes with those kids figure out where the horns are on those, those machines. I get the opportunity to go to the Ohio Municipal League Conference this week along with Mayor Stone and Councilman Bales. I'm looking forward to that, learning some new, new things that we, we may be facing in the future. And then PAC 85, I'll finish up with that. I've done a few of these. These kids were amazing. They took over this whole area up here and, and they really debated and they had a lot of fun doing it and my understanding is at least two or three of them went home and continued to debate when they got home.
They certainly weren't chicken, were they?
No, they weren't. So, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. So, as everyone who knows me knows, I'll be the first one to say I'm full-blooded Italian. So, Happy Columbus Day to everyone. This was enacted in 1892 in response to anti-Italian sentiment and the murder of 11 Italian-Americans. So, this is something that my family and culture holds very dear. So, Happy Columbus Day, everybody. Second, also, we would like to again welcome Officer Morissette and wish her the best of luck. I think she's going to be a great addition to our group. We, Mayor Stone and I had the opportunity to also welcome another Cub Scout PAC, so that must have been the theme. We had another group up here. For everyone who doesn't know, usually when we're talking about debates, what we do is we have the Cub Scouts come in and we give them a prompt that we have actually had in council over past years and we ask them, how would you handle the situation if you were us? And we let them go through and it's always entertaining to see. They always think they're going to get up here and they, they immediately make a decision and then we say, wait, wait a minute. Okay, well, let's hear from residents. We have their parents come up and then by the end of it, they're, you know, they're kind of fighting among themselves to figure it out because it's not as easy as it looks sometimes, but that was really fun to have them up there. We had about five or six, fifth graders to have with us. And then I also have the opportunity to read our anniversaries this evening. I don't know if we could put that up, but we say this all the time. We are, we have an amazing staff across all departments and we're so thankful for everything that they do for us. So, we have, congratulations to everyone up here, but Philip Rose has been four years with our golf service. Judy Lemke, nine years with our senior center. Randy Burgett, 16 years, I've never heard of him before, 16 years with our planning and development. James Spicer with our Police Department for 33 years. I think he takes the cake tonight for most years in service on our list. Dylan St. New, two years with our Police Department. David Ashworth, three years with our Police Department. Paige Bagford is 14 years with public service. Nate Sparks, 10 years with public service. Livet Chapman, 24 years with dispatch. And Chrissy Fedcaw with 17 years with our senior center. So, again, thank you to everyone who makes this city run so well and makes our jobs apparently look so easy up here for fifth graders, but we appreciate all of your help and you really do make things a lot easier for all of us up here. So, thank you.
All right. Well, everything has just about been covered, but I'm going to add to a couple of them. First, I would like to thank Councilmember Schwartz and Councilmember Adams for doing the Women's League Forum. You both did an excellent job, so thank you very much. And of course, thanks to the Women's League for hosting. Councilmember Bales commented on Jeff McGrath's golf remembrance outing and it, it, it's an emotional outing, but it's extremely, a huge amount of fun. And of course, Pete's the one that carried our foursome, so I mean, I, I just had to sit back and watch as Pete carried his three. So, anyway, that was a lot of fun. I also want to thank the optimists for having the reception tent at the open house for the police. They did a nice job, had a little coffee and refreshments and information. The international students, I just want to add a little bit, just so you'll know, the students this time came from 22 countries and there were 37 of them in attendance. So, we used to do these, we got up to about two a year before COVID and now, we're just now getting back into this, this rhythm. So, hopefully they'll be doing more and more of you can join me when they, when they do come in. But it is, it's one of those two-way streets that we, I get anyway as much out of it as they do, just like having the scouts in, I get. But that's another thing that is now back on the table that was gone for a while. We used to do scout troops quite frequently and I was so pleased that they started back again and it is real pleasure and the one thing they really love more than anything else is this right here.
Right back there.
Not on the microphone.
But, I'm not going to hit it, but it's not just those scouts that like this. The international students did just as much. They get up here, we have them come up and get a picture and they come up and grab this gavel and they're ready to go to and they, it's just, they turn into young kids and have a ball. And I want to thank the Police Department because they leave us and go next door and get a tour of the Police Department. And if it's like some I've seen, I didn't follow them over this time, some I've seen they, they get into character over there as well with the handcuffs and what have you going on. So, the city, the, the people at Wright-Patt really appreciate us as a city for how we accommodate their students. Let's see, what else did I have? I think that just about covers it, but. So, I think I will turn it over now to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too thank Councilmembers Schwartz and Adams for their presentation at the Women's League and for the Women's League, of course, allowing us time to present the information. Those Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts that do come up here, I've heard them debate the trash one time about, you know, throwing trash littering, right? They had you years in jail for throwing a piece of trash out, so you, you better watch it. They mean business.
And I think the media ran with that one.
May have, yeah. It's pretty, pretty good. I mean, sometimes we need to think like a child, sometimes, really. It would really help. It's pretty clear, yeah, it's pretty clear to them when wrong is wrong, right? All right, so tonight, just a couple of things. Gas aggregation, we, I wanted to update everybody, this is a good, good time. Late last week and talking, ever since we had a presentation and authorizing, legislation authorizing me to be able to sign a contract for the gas aggregation, we've been watching the rates and the, the rates are very volatile with, that's why we do what we did with the language in the legislation was worded as such, because it's just like a gas station. One day it's 3.79, the next day it's 4.99 and you wish to God you would have filled up yesterday, right? So, gas and, and electrics, both kind of the same way in the market. Well, our vendor, who is our, our go-to on aggregation, Energy Alliance, they have recommended to the city that we not enter into a contract for gas aggregation program at this time. They've been watching it. Gas has been going down and down and down, which is good. I mean, that means it's competitive for even CenterPoint and the other gas companies that it's been going down. Their fear was that if they enter into an aggregation program now, the soonest meter reading that they're going to be able to get is December and they had a fear that the program could be underwater by month three, meaning now you're paying more for natural gas than in our aggregation program that you could have if you just would have stayed. This is why I, Energy Alliance, I have brought them with me as I started as city manager. I had previous years in Dalhuy Township with, experience with them. I found them very trustworthy. You know, any other vendor may have said, oh yeah, just go ahead and go with us so that they could make a dime or whatever they're going to make, but Energy Alliance has recommended that we stay put. So, I'm going with that recommendation to city council that we would stay put. You know, nobody has a crystal ball. Tomorrow, something could happen and prices just go up like you wouldn't believe for whatever reason, right? But that's not what they're seeing. They're seeing the future markets continue to go down and with that, their recommendation, I concur with that we listen to the experts, the professionals at this time. So, we always, as we do the electric and gas, electric will be, start shopping probably about next April or May, but we'll always look at gas again. Usually, gas is the fall of the year is when the price, prices go back down when they go out for bid. So, we will, as we have every year, I have always watched for gas, so it's not like gas is new for us as far as watching. Every single year I've been here, we've watched for the prices. It's just never been competitive enough for us to go on our own to get a better price. So, I just wanted to bring everybody up on that point, so sorry, we won't be having a gas aggregation. You can still, you know, compete and there's competitive, just watch anytime you sign a contract. I'm asking residents to please watch careful. Most contracts, when you sign, you're signing something that Most contracts, when you sign, you're signing something that is going to have a pretty large termination fee. It's going to have clauses on it and how long it's for. Just always watch what you're signing, and, because there's a lot of gas and electric companies that are going around trying to sell business. So just buyer beware, as always, do your homework. But the city will not have a gas aggregation program this year. We will continue with our electric aggregation program through meter reading, I believe it is, of August. But again, next May or so, we will be doing the price shopping, and we'll keep everybody apprised to the electric aggregation. All right. I hope that, if you have any questions, feel free to call the office. We can help try to explain any more further on that. Factory Road Construction is going on at US 35 and Factory during the, we're talking about, during all this switchover, the Factory Road will be closed southbound to traffic the entire day of Tuesday, October 11th, so that is tomorrow. While this work is in progress, longer traffic delays can be expected. Drivers encouraged to find alternative routes. And as always, if you have any questions, feel free to call Engineering Division at So that's a big one, but the southbound traffic during the entire day of Tuesday will be closed. So please find alternative routes. I think everybody was excited about this, Try Truck. So this is this Saturday at 10:00 AM, October 15th, 10:00 AM, down at Municipal Maintenance Facility off of Orchard Lane. This is also in conjunction with a Fire Department's open house that is just up the street from it, but they'll have their fire trucks and engines out as well, and our dump trucks, and snow plows, and some other vendors usually have big, heavy equipment that they bring as well. And kids just love to beep the horns. But to mention that, the first hour of the event, so starting at 10, from 10 to 11, is a sensory-friendly meeting, meaning the lights and horns, we won't be beeping, so those children that have issues with overload on sensory overload will be able to attend. And then we'll let them rip at 11 o'clock, you'll hear horns going all over the place, as kids love to honk the big air horns. Trick or treat, beggars' night, whatever your preference is on calling it this, but as always, the city observes it with the other cities around, that is part of the agreement with the mayors and managers, that we celebrate on the actual holiday, October 31st, 2022, rain, sleet, snow, rain, ice, et cetera. I think the last time they learned, in '13, when they canceled it and rescheduled, the day they rescheduled it to was worse. And, you know, people called, you know, we do not make anybody have their kids go out. Please, if, make sure they're safe, or if you feel it's unsafe conditions, you know, there's a grocery store that has candy. A lot of times, too, please, a lot, including an Optimist Club, I'm sure Kiwanis have all these special events that are going to start coming up to where kids can, before Halloween even happens, get loaded of candy and have fun at events and dress up and stuff. So please keep an eye out on those. We'll try to have some if you aren't aware of them, but please keep an eye out for that as possibilities as well. Just wanted to mention, for the information, that we do have levy information for street and police levies that we both have. It is on our website, www.beavercreechohi.gov, and scroll down, you'll see levy information that will take you to much more information of what it is, how much it's going to cost, why now, about the police facility, about the streets, about inflation, all the other information that is provided at your fingertips. If you have any questions, there's contact numbers and contact email as well to make. So please feel free to look and make yourself educated for the educational material we are providing. This was exciting. We did a press release today. This is, we have started seeking resident input to, first of all, to name the new park. So help name Beaver Creek's newest park, now the largest park, 148 acres. There's beavercreecohi.gov/newpark, and that will take you to a just-opened new webpage today that has all this information on there. On that new webpage, you will be able to go to a link to click a form that will come up that you can hand enter then. You can enter into the form and submit for your suggestion of the name. At events like Try Truck and stuff, we'll probably have links to that, so people can link to it on their phone, but we'll probably have hard copies of the form that they can fill out if they want to suggest a park name, the old-fashioned way, with paper. But a public forum on top of that is being held on Wednesday, October 26th, so mark that down on your calendars, October 26th, 6:00 to 7:30 PM, and this is at the senior center. Residents will have the chance to review conceptual, two concept plans, ask questions, and provide feedback. If you're unable to attend this, we'll have another one in November. Plus, there's going to be time for surveys that also are going to be out. And please be sure to follow the cities, not only the page on the website that we have particularly created for this, but also on social media, we'll have plenty of future announcements. Remember, part of this was, I wanted to show this, show back to me, if you will, Steve. Steve, if he can come back to me on camera, please. This is the 2019 Park Master Plan. So, and that's for all the parks, 23 parks that went through. This is a new one, and anybody that wants to take this with them and path around to have the information. This contains all the data sorts, all the information for the surveys that were done back there, and all the comments, everything's in here, and this is what it's based on. With that, the 2019 doesn't invalidate this, and invalidate that. What we're doing is taking all the information from here and moving forward. That's how we already have conceptual plans, and then we'll have additional feedback for the specific site plan. I think it'll make all more sense to council as we have the vendor here next work session, next Monday, we will be here with the vendor and be able to ask questions, and maybe it'll make more sense. But with this, Steve, if you go back to video, I wanted to show a video that was just released. This video was just taken last, last week, and by Mr. Smith. Nick Smith flew the drone for this, and we'll let this rip here for a minute. So, thank you, Katie, for putting that together, and Nick for flying the drone. That was a very good work. That's a capability, too, we have that drone. That's why we have that drone, to do projects and road projects and everything else, to be able to see that. But again, first of all, the first priority is to name the park, is what we're looking for as far as the feedback, and then we're going to have the conceptual plans, and we'll start looking for feedback from that. So a lot going on, and this will, please go to the website. Easiest way to get all the information, beavercreecohi.gov/newpark, and that will really outline the information and keep you updated on the, the last, least, the latest, let me say that, the latest information, because sometimes you may have missed a Facebook post or something, but the website will be continuously updated. So tonight, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point on the agenda, it's citizen comment. So is there anybody here this evening that would like to address council on any matter at all? Come forward if there is. Seeing none, we will close the citizen comment section and see if there's a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and/or two to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.